Oh, and actually, I think we do need to do a roll call vote since we're remote. So actually, I need to call out each person's name and get it because we need to be. I think it's just required when we're remote. So Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul, are you there? Do you approve the minutes?
I'm mute.
Ah. Paul's on mute.
Doug, is that you? Doug, is that you? Doug, is that you? We gotta echo with Doug. I just muted him.
Okay.
Paul, are you there?
Yeah, everybody's broken up. I'm only getting bits and pieces.
Do you approve the minutes of March 12th? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm also a yes. Chris? So we've got four yeses. And Doug, if you could hear us, maybe we could try to unmute him to see if he can say yes or no to approving the minutes. Doug, do you approve the minutes?
Okay.
Do you vote yes to approve the minutes of March 12th?
Yes, I do. Yes, I approve them.
Very good. So it's unanimous. The minutes are approved. All right, then we're gonna move on to reviewing and awarding winter sand bids and crush stone bids. Paul, you have the document. Okay?
I've got them right here.
Just to let people know, we couldn't put those up ahead of time because we couldn't open them ahead of time. We're supposed to open them at the meeting. So Paul's gonna open them and read them to us.
Yeah, I'm just opening them now here. I just picked them up today.
Okay.
First, first one is winter sand bid from Fuller Sand and Gravel. Hold on here. I gotta open it. This is from, uh, does everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, 6,000 yards, more or less, winter sand. Uh, it's $9 per yard. Paid upon request. 700 per yard paid by July 1st. In the amount of 21,000.
Did everybody get that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's Fuller. Now, the next one, Certified Mail just come in from Pike Industries for winter sand. Pike Industries, same, the same. It's the same amount, 6,000 yards. It's $9.52 per yard. Upon receipt. And per yard, the others are non-available. and then it's got some notes. they've gotta be weighed in by the ton. Induces will be charged by the ton, $9.52. And translates to $7 per ton for loose. And for other materials, $7 per ton. Pike requires a minimum 24 hours notice for loading winter sand December through March.
Okay.
So theirs is $9.52 cents per yard.
Okay, and Fuller's was $9 a yard, right?
Yep.
And Pike does not have a prepay? I'd make a motion to award it.
They're the only two we have for winter sand.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to award it to Fuller Sand and Gravel and do the pre-buy, giving them a check before July 1st.
Yep, I'll second that.
In the amount of $21,000.
So Brad made the motion. Who's seconding it?
I'll second it.
Is that Paul? I mean Doug?
Yeah, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay.
I think we ought-
Go ahead, Steve.
I think we ought to, I think we ought to prepay more than the 3,000 yards worth. If we're gonna prepay, I think we ought to prepay for 5,000 yards. Which would put us at 35,000.
I would amend the motion to that.
Paul, does that agree with your figures?
How many, how many yards we buying altogether? 35,000?
No, 5,000.
5,000?
I thought we were buying 6,000.
Yeah. I believe we used to-
5,000 at 700 a yard.
$7 a yard.
Or $7, yeah.
Right. On the pre-buy.
Yeah.
Yes.
So whatever we, we're gonna, we're gonna pre-buy the whole year supply, ain't we?
That's what I'm trying to go for. Cause 21,000 wouldn't be the year.
Yeah, Paul, are they offering us that? Or is there a limit to what we can pre-buy?
Oh, the way he's got it written up, there's $7 per yard by July 1st in the amount of 21,000.
So-
So that's what we'll do then?
Steve's doing the math.
Imagine if you could get in touch with him and find out, because that would be another big savings.
Yeah.
Yep. So why don't you do that?
So should we amend the motion to say that we're accepting the bid from Fuller Sand and Gravel? Um, you know, and we're going to see if they'll allow us to pre-buy 5,000 yards at 35,000?
That's right. So I'll, I'll make a motion to that.
All right. Will you second?
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, so I'm willing to amend the motion to that. And I think that Doug is willing to go along with that as the second.
Yeah, I will.
So who's gonna call Tom? Make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks.
Paul's the road commissioner.
Yeah, Paul, will you call Tom to ask if we can do the-
I didn't hear. I didn't hear what went on.
Oh, no wonder. I was asking if you could call Tom to find out if we can do 5,000 yards instead of three for $35,000.
Yep, yep, I will call, I will call him in the morning.
Okay, just let us know. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to do it one at a time, I'm sorry. So let's back up a little. We gotta do it one at a time. Brad, are you in favor?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
Uh, Doug?
Yes.
Lynn, aye. All right. Moving on to crush stone bids.
Everybody's gone blank here, so.
Oh, we're wait, we're waiting for you to open crush stone bids.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, that's where you're blank. Okay. Yeah, I'm saying, looks like awesome. No, we only got one for crush stone. That's from Fuller Sand and Gravel.
Okay.
Hold on. Uh, that's for the, what our bid contract went out for was 2,500 yards, more or less. Let's just, let me just check, see if that says more or less. Yeah, okay, the, the other sand bid, jumping back, that says 6,000 yards, more or less. So I, I still find out what he meant. If that's only for the 3,000 yards or five or six, if he'll hold that. So then we can check, see what we did use, and we'll do it that way.
Yeah.
All right, uh, crush stone bid. The only one, it was Fuller Sand and Gravel. And that's $13 per yard. On receipt and $11 per yard prepaid by July 1st.
And how, how, what, did it give an amount with that? How, how many, does it say how many yards we can prepay? Or could we prepay as many or as little as?
Well, it just said prepaid. And I think, I think the only reason, what I'm gathering, I'm just assuming, he's got $11 per yard by July 1st prepaid. Amount of $11,000. So I'll check on that one too, to see if, you know, we can go up to the, uh, 2,500 on a prepaid also.
Good.
And it's 2,500 yards we're getting, correct?
That would be 27,500.
Exactly.
Yeah, 2,500 yards.
I scared my, yeah. I scared myself and had 25,000 yards and was like freaking out at the cost. Yes, that would be prepaid 27,500. So, um, I know that last year we worried and we, we may not have the cash in hand to prepay. But I think that we can borrow money from the bank to prepay this. It's so low interest that I think it's worth our while to prepay. So I do think we should be trying to prepay whenever we can. It's a big saving.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Figure that's $5,000 if we do the 2,500.
Yeah.
That's $5,000 savings right there.
Right.
Just on the stone.
Exactly.
Yeah, interest, interest rates are pretty cheap right now.
Yes. So can I, motion to accept? So let me just ask you this. So it's unfortunate we don't have other bids, but we only have one bid. And, and, uh, so does anybody have any thoughts about that? Or should we go ahead and see if anybody wants to make a motion to accept that bid?
I'll make the motion. We accept, prepay what we need for stone.
Yeah, I think what, what happened this year is a lot of, I think Tommy crushes the stone for the amount that we're gonna use because there's been a couple of times that he hasn't had it in stock, so he's had to go to SLC. So I'm wondering if we use up about what we need and have him have it for us right there. So we don't have to go to SLC.
I think that's a very good idea.
That's gonna save us mileage plus I like Tommy's stuff better because it packs in better. Don't have as much belt.
Yeah, you're right on that.
Yep.
You're right.
I'll make a motion. We take, get that one.
Let me find out from Dougie what we did use up last year. And we can save out that 2,500. And I'll ask Tom if he has stockpile it for us so we don't run out this year.
Okay, so, so who's ever making a motion, maybe amended to say that we're gonna do, accept the bid, the prepaid at 11 and we'll, um, for as much as we're able to, uh, to, to do up to 25,000, 2,500 yards. Does that make sense?
Yep, makes sense to me.
All right. So who made the motion? Who's amending it?
I made the motion.
All right, so Doug's got that motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Steve's seconding it. Any further discussion?
He ain't second. Who was the, who was the movement?
Doug made the motion and Steve seconded it. So we'll call the roll call. Um, Brad, do you approve?
I do.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. So unanimously approved. All right, next up on our agenda is our road commissioner's report. Um, yes. Um, road commissioner's report including, we had on there, Paul, access permits change.
Um, well, we got, the, the roads have dried up pretty good and we are, uh, got most of the poster signs, posted signs down. And we've got hopefully the worst of the worst graded for now. Cause we're down to, uh, two man on the road crew and we're still getting by fairly good. I did see on here, I don't know if there's access permits or part of this report, but, uh, the Greg Hutchins. I checked that out yesterday. Larry and Laurie checked it out yesterday before I got there. I did call Greg. And he, I did talk naturally. I was on a phone conference with them, with the contractor that was doing it. And they've agreed to go with an 18-inch culvert. And, uh, they're probably gonna go with a full 40-foot because you can't get a 10-foot culvert just for extra. So that one was approved and I signed it today. And we're just waiting for the E911 number so they can, uh, have DigSafe double-check it for, um, everything.
Okay.
And, um, I guess that's about it, other than just the regular spring maintenance. We're just trying to get things. We just had, uh, the loader all taken care of. They came over and, uh, got everything serviced on it. They had to do something with the electronic part. And while they were here, they did a full service on it. So that's taken care of. And one truck, uh, Western Star is over getting turbo put on. And that should be back. They're gonna do the regular maintenance on it. And then, uh, when they bring that one back, they're gonna take the other Western Star over and, uh, do the inspection and the maintenance on that one also.
What's going on with the old Otis Road access permit? Zemo and, Zemo and Tremley up on Old Otis Road. Access permit. What's happening there?
Uh, for driveway permit? I should say driveway permit. Access, yeah, it should be driveway permit.
Yeah, so what's happening with them?
So is it, is it okay or not? I heard there was problems.
Yeah, so I approved it today. I went down, that's when I was in the office today. I signed it. I called a guy back and then I was on the phone with a contractor. So we made sure we're all on the same base with it.
Oh, I thought that was Hutchins.
That's that Greg Hutchins. The other one is on Old Otis.
What about Zemo and Tremley?
That one is not gonna be approved until we can meet with them because that's kind of a odd situation set up over there. So we're gonna have to meet with that Zemo and Tremble, Tremley or whatever it is. And see what they got in mind. And then Larry and I and Laurie will go over and check that out.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I clarify that Hutchins has been approved and Zemo is not?
Good. All right, um, so we had on our agenda talking about chainsaws or not to chainsaw. Um, I know that we had been given some quotes, um, from-
You want me to step in on that one, Lynn?
Please.
Lynn?
Yes, please.
Yes. Okay, uh, I see that Charlie went and checked with, uh, up in Rutland. I don't have a problem with checking around, but I've come to the conclusion over the last few years that, um, our most reliable service has been through White Sales and Service. Charlie's always been good to us. And I did find out something when I talked with Charlie the other day that our Charlie, road foreman, never clued me in on is the reason we're having trouble with these chainsaws because they don't get run enough is Charlie at White's told our Charlie that they should be adding the pre-mix fuel that they sell right at White's. And this stuff has all the conditioners and stuff in it. And for saws that don't get run or any two-cycle equipment that don't get run a lot, this is the stuff to put in them because, uh, the fuel don't really go dead in it and it will start a whole lot better. And our saws don't get used a whole lot, only certain times of the year.
Yeah, and they're decent.
Yeah, I mean, they're decent saws. And I keep harping to Charlie. I says, you know, drop them off and get them set. Well, they get them set and then they don't use them for a month. And then they start cranking on them and then trouble begins, you know, with that dead fuel in there. So I just recommend that we take the saws up there, have Charlie tune them up. And we'll start buying that pre-mix fuel right through there. I've seen it up there. And from what I hear from other guys that have used it, it's, you know, it's more expensive, but in the long run, it's less expensive and less wear on the, on the saws.
So you feel, Scott, you feel that we have the, the equipment that we need and at this time, we don't need to purchase any new?
Yeah, the ones we got now, I think we just should bring them up there, let Charlie go through them, get them running, take the fuel that's in there out and start using. You know, if we're gonna, if we're into a project where we're gonna be using a lot of it, we can mix it as we go. But before we get ready to put them away, we should add that pre-mix fuel that they sell, uh, through Charlie. And he's always given us the best deal we can get.
All right.
And as far as the third, the third saw, and I've done a little check-in. I checked with Charlie and I know my son uses them and a lot of places are starting to change over is my own personal feeling. And I will check with the road crew before I, I make the decision because I'm not on road crew. But I'm all in favor of putting one saw being a battery-operated one. Because these new battery-operated saws are unreal. I mean, uh, like Charlie said, you keep the battery charged in it. And if you've got a tree to cut out of the road, a small one, or whatever, you just throw it in the truck. You ain't gotta worry about spilling fuel. And you get there and you pull the trigger and it's going. Uh, but I probably would recommend, and like I said, depending on who we get, uh, outside of road crew, run it by them and see what their thoughts are on it. But I would be in favor of at least having one, uh, battery-operated saw.
So, so I think what you're saying is that at this time, we don't need any new saws. But if we want to consider one, you'd like, in the future, we'd consider a battery-operated. How do, how do other folks feel?
I will check, I'll check around to see what he's got. I know I switched a battery-operated weed eater. And I tell you what, that's, that's the best thing that ever happened. I mean, I can get half an hour to 45 minutes to re-dieting them by them. That's out of, that's out of battery and I'm out of fuel. So and then they just bring a spare battery with you.
And does anybody feel strongly that we need?
That's, that's my own thought.
Yeah, let me just check in with other people. Does anybody feel strongly that we need a chainsaw now? Or should we just let this go for now?
I think, I think we're all set. We just picked the ones we got.
Go ahead.
The ones we got, if, once you get them tuned back up and then, well, I got saws and I have, what I do with my saw when I get done with it, I dump the gas out of it and run it till it quits. And then when you fill it back up with fresh gas, it starts right off.
Right.
I mean, you can't leave the gas in them if you don't treat it.
Right.
Well, I, I didn't hear all of that, but I think I know what Doug's talking about. They always, a lot of times they tell you to dump the fuel out. And then, uh, run it dry. But then I've heard pros and cons on that too. But like I said, I, I don't use them enough anymore. But that's why I kinda rely on Charlie to, uh, help us out. And which is gonna be our best direction to go in.
All right, well then if I don't hear from anybody else having a difference of opinion, we'll just move on on our agenda to the tractor discussion. Does that sound okay?
Good.
Very.
All right, tractor discussion. Um, so on our last couple of meetings, we have been looking at different possibilities to replace our tractor that does our mow side, mow, road side mowing. And we had some quotes and we were pretty close to doing it, but now I think we're having second thoughts. Um, anybody wanna speak to that?
Yeah, I do. I think with this COVID-19 virus, I think we should hold off on buying a tractor and mower because I think we're gonna need that money to survive this, this year. Because a lot of people ain't gonna be able to pay their taxes because they're not working. And I think that we, we could get by with what we got and make this one pass on the main roads. We're gonna have to cut back a lot this year.
Makes a good point. Anybody have any other thoughts?
I agree with Doug.
Yeah, as much as I'd like a new tractor, uh, I've gotta go that route too because we are a whole different situation now. And I think we probably should hold and, um, see what this whole mess comes out at.
Yeah, because, you know, the tractor, they ain't gonna move nothing either all summer long. So, I mean, if anything, the price of everything is gonna come down. And I, I, I don't know about you guys, but I gotta tell you, this is gonna be a long, drab, elk deal.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I think that, um, you know, we were, we were thinking we would spend the money that's in our equipment fund to get the tractor. It's actual money that we have on hand. And if in fact, we're going to end up with shortages because the economy is, is in such tough shape, um, it, it does seem to make more sense to not spend money that we don't absolutely have to right now. And if things get better, we can purchase it at a later time.
That's right. It, that's, that's my, that's my feeling.
Yeah, Steve, we haven't heard from you. What are your thoughts?
I gotta, I gotta agree also.
What do you think, Steve?
I'll call the vendors. I've talked to them. Tell them we don't want it.
Okay.
At this time.
At this time. I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, uh, yeah, I can get ahold of Tim. I know he's been touching base with me. And Doug can get ahold of, uh, the other ones over there. And I think they'll understand.
Oh, yeah, everybody.
We got, we got the money anyways. And if something does turn around quick, we can always, um, I don't think the prices are gonna go up any. So
No, no.
If we get a chance, we, we can grab it.
Right.
Right.
Anything like something, the only thing we'll lose out on probably is the side mower. But, well, we always get a side mower.
Yeah, that's right. Well, look at, uh, what a farmer today, they ain't, they ain't doing too good because the milk prices keep dropping. I mean, so you know that the dealers down there ain't be selling a lot of these big tractors because the farmers ain't got no money to buy it with. So if anything, they're gonna start lowering the price, just move them. And if everything works out good, we can have to buy one later. price, just move them. And if everything works out good, we can have to buy one later this summer while we can get it. If not, we'll still go be all right.
Yeah, I think we don't, none of us has a crystal ball on the future and it seems to make sense to be conservative at this time. So, um, all right, so that seems like we have a, a consensus about that. Um, I don't know that we need a motion, but maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to make a motion to purchasing the tractor on hold. Can I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Doug's made the motion. Can I, you're second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
All right, gonna do the roll call.
Steve.
Oh, any further discussion? All right, then Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul? Paul, do you approve of putting it on hold?
I think he fell asleep.
I don't know. I didn't, I didn't hear my name. Yeah. All right, Doug, that's enough. I did fall asleep.
So we're unanimous. Okay, um, next on our agenda, we had Sourcewell up there. Is that to finish the application to Sourcewell, Paul?
Uh, I, I think it is, but I mean, that Sourcewell is gone too as far as I know.
Okay.
We already have a Sourcewell number.
Good. All right. Then I don't think we need any further action on that, do we?
Nope, nope, we're all set. As long as you remember to use it when we buy anything.
Exactly.
Or at least check on it.
Okay, next up our fleet permit. Um, and I did include those with, um, uh, let's see, I had included those in your, um, things and somehow my fleet permits just came up on my Rome screen. I have to call my technical support. Gary, can you help me?
Me neither.
Yeah, I've done something awful to the computer. Give me a minute. Um, he's coming. So it's blocking mine.
With the list that I see, I'd make the motion that we just go ahead and approve them.
Yeah, I, I'll second that because they ain't, none of them gonna be that big.
All right, you've looked through them all and none of them that, that big, all right?
We've already approved them in the past.
Right.
Yeah, they pretty much look like ours.
You're remembering to, you're remembering to include Herman Construction.
Yeah, we did. She did.
Well, right, so we, so, so the list is, um, Wind River, AmeriGas, Hop Energy, Mill, Miller Construction, Driscoll Brothers, uh, Brazen Brothers, Pike Industries and Herman Construction. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so we have a motion to approve all fleet permits.
Yep.
Made by, Steve, was that you?
Yes.
And it was seconded by?
I'll second it.
Doug? Um, and then, oh, one of the things gonna be a little bit of a challenge with these is usually we all sign them. Um, I would make the suggestion, I have a, um, access to a really good electronic signature in this time of COVID-19. It might be a good idea to make a motion to authorize me to sign on behalf of all of us and then that way I can do it electronically and no one can go to the town office and, and risk, um, any exposure.
Okay, I'll make the motion signing.
Well, you already have a motion on the floor.
Right, let's approve them first and then we'll do the signing. So we've got a motion to approve the permits. I heard of, uh, the, the motion was made by Steve. Who seconded it?
I did.
I'll second it.
So Doug's seconding and so any further discussion? There being none. Brad, do you approve?
Yes.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And I do too.
You're awake Doug?
What's that?
If somebody wants to make a motion about-
Yeah.
Does somebody wanna make a motion about signing? Brad, would you do that?
Yeah.
Yes, I would make that motion.
All right, so Brad's made a motion to authorize me to sign for everybody electronically. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Did you catch that Chris? Who seconded it?
Steve did.
Oh, Steve did? I think we both did same time.
All right, made by Brad, seconded by Steve. Um, again, uh, we'll call the motion. Brad, yea or nay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lynn, yes. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Moving on, we have a planning commission appointments and, um, pardon?
Two appointments.
Two appointments for the, uh, yes, we're all. Um, so let's see, we had, uh, uh, we had, um, letters from, oh, remind me, so, um-
Shelley Taylor and Greg Heaton.
Right, and Shelley, you're with us, right?
I am.
Hi Shelley.
Can you hear me?
I do. So you would like to be reappointed? Shelley, you would like to be reappointed to the planning commission?
Yeah, sorry, I was muted. Um, can you hear me?
I can.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so I'd like to be reappointed, especially since we have a little bit of a kerfluffle with COVID-19.
Yeah, so that's, that's delaying the rewrite of the plan, is that correct?
That's correct. We've decided at this point to postpone it until-
I lost them. Can anybody hear Shelley?
No.
I can hear you.
So last thing I heard was they decided to postpone it, but I didn't hear if she had anything else to say.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
All right, it keeps muting me for some reason. Um, so yeah, we've decided to postpone it till May at the very least and see what happens. And the governor has extended a 90-day extension to all town plans.
Okay. All right.
So yeah, so we'd very much like to be reappointed to take it through this whole COVID-19 mess.
Oh, great. Um, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to appoint Shelley.
So I'll move.
I'll make the motion.
Will you guys talk, yeah, tell Chris who did what. He, he didn't catch that.
Brad.
Brad made the motion. Who seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay, Paul's seconded. All right, so for Shelley, uh, any further discussion? None? Let's see, Brad, yea or nay?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul? Paul? Yes, okay, Doug?
Yes.
Lynn, yes, all right. Um, and then Greg is the other one. Um, did we hear from Greg as to whether he wants to be considered?
Yes, he put in a letter.
He did, okay, thank you. I wasn't, I wasn't positive of that, but I thought he had. Um-
So I would move Greg. This is Brad.
Okay.
I'll second it.
He's seconding it. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call, I'll call the vote. Let's see, we've got, um, Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lynn, yes. All, so unanimous, all in favor. All right, and Shelley, since you're here, I just wanna thank you for your service and all the work you do. I appreciate it.
No problem.
What's Greg's last?
Go ahead, Chris, what'd you say?
What's Greg's last name?
Greg Heaton. H-E-A-T-O-N.
Greg Heaton. Okay, uh, moving on to some other-
We have, we have the Rutland Regional appointments too.
Oh, right, um, and that, um-
Doug's not on here.
No, but we do need, it's to the report to the Rutland Regional and the, the seconds that now currently, um, uh, I'm trying to remember who's in those positions.
It's Shelley and Michelle Bushy.
It's Michelle, that's right. Michelle said she would like to stay on as alternate, correct?
And, or she would be chair if Shelley, or, uh, primary, whatever you call it. It's up to Shelley. I know Shelley's not working in Rutland now, so I don't, I don't know what Shelley feels.
No, I'm fine. I'm fine to continue on.
Okay, so, so you would like to continue as, as our, our, um, first representative with, um, Michelle as our, um, alternate?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Do I hear a second?
Second by Brad.
All right. Any further discussion? Um, Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
I didn't hear my name, but yeah.
Good job.
Yes.
And Lynn is yes. Okay, um, all right, then moving on to other appointments, we have service officer, tree warden and fence viewers. Um, I can say that I spoke with, um, Roger Bromley and he is willing to once again be our tr, our tree warden, um, if we would like to have him. Um, so if anybody would like to make a motion to reappoint Roger Bromley our tree warden?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, so that was Doug made and, and Steve seconded. Did you get that Chris?
Right.
Okay. And it's Roger Bromley as tree warden and, uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, Brad, you in favor?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
And Lynn is yes, so, um, unanimous for that. Um, service officer, that is currently Hyrum Fisk, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, would anybody like to make a motion to reappoint Hyrum?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, um, who made the motion? So who made it?
Doug.
Doug, and who seconded?
I did.
Paul, okay?
Paul.
All right. Um, so we'll go down the list. Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Lynn's yes, okay. And finally, we come to fence viewers. Uh, our current, well, let's see, um, so I understand that Ben Bromley's willing to be a fence viewer again. Um, Brad, who is our-
So is Mike Green and, um, to replace Richard Edmonds who passed away, um, Greg Heaton would take the position, he said.
Okay. And we did ask a few other folks and, and, uh, great for the Greg group. So, so I hear a motion to appoint Ben Bromley, Mike Green and Greg Heaton as fence viewers.
I'll make a motion.
Don't move.
So that's Doug with Paul as a second?
Right.
Sure.
All right. So, is that any further discussion? Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Uh, Doug?
Yes.
All right, and Lynn, yes. All right, so that takes care of our fence viewers, tree warden and service officer. Um-
And I guess, uh, Mike Green.
Yeah, Myron Green.
Myron Green. And Rich, uh, Greg Heaton.
Greg Heaton.
Greg.
Greg, yep, Greg, G-R-E-G.
And Ben, Ben Bromley.
Ben, Benjamin, Ben, Ben Bromley. I'm assuming, I don't know that.
And that's green with an E.
Right, on the end, G-R-E-E-N-E. Um, yeah. Um, so we don't have a lot of public here. Shelley, are you still with us? So, um-
Would you like your Rutland Regional update?
Sure, let's do that.
All right, it's quick. Um, the Act 250, we did our meeting, you know, via phone and it worked very well. Act 250, Act 250 Committee, we voted yes on some cell towers and some solar for different towns around Rutland County and we did so because the towns were all in favor of them. And they met with the Rutland Regional Plan. And Timothy had their energy plan public hearing before our main meeting and that went through without a hitch. And let's see, we had a presentation about high-speed internet, um, in areas that aren't covered. It really didn't affect us because we're all recovered. And that was, that was it.
All right, um, thank you. Um, but you may be able to shed some light on something I wanted to bring up on under other business. Um, it's come to our attention, um, I think Bob and I both got a note from Ed Boeb with the Planning Commission that, um, towns are being offered on a first come, first served basis, the ability to be given the hardware for, um, uh, wireless hotspot for its town and Danby is, was one chosen because we don't have a wireless hot, hot, or not, I don't know if it's wireless, but a hotspot.
Okay, that's something I hadn't heard about.
Okay, um, and so they were looking to see, so, so for the town, Bob, am I right that, that, um, that the equipment would be donated, but the, but the town would have to pick up the charge for the internet connection on a monthly basis? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it, the requirement is wherever, wherever we place it, um, that there's internet and electric. So, right, so there's the internet for sure, if the town would cover that.
And, and the idea is that people would be able to not, they're not saying that they wanna set it up so that people go inside. It's not like an internet cafe or something. It's the idea that people would be able to park outside of it in their car protected from COVID. They would be able to have access to the internet if they didn't have access. And the thing that's hard for me is to figure out how, I don't really know, um, what people might not have access in Danby. Um, I know that we, um, almost all have the ability to have high-speed internet through either VTAL or Comcast, um, but there may be issues where people can't afford that service. Um, and they don't have cell service. So unlike in many places where they would have the abilities to still communicate because they'd have a cellphone, up in the four-corner area, we have a lot of people who don't have access via cellphone. So-
That's for sure.
So, one thought was whether or not we could find some entity in the four corners that would be willing to house the equipment and then would the town be willing to, on into the future, pay the monthly fee to have a hotspot where, where people who don't have access with cell phones would have a way to get, um, information and data. So, I don't know. So the question for the select board is, are we interested in this? And then we'd have to find a location in the four, it, it seemed to me that the four corners is the one that has more of an issue than downtown because downtown has cell. Um, if it's the four corners, the, the two thoughts that came to where it might be housed, um, one was the church. I know the church has been very, um, helpful during the, um, the Baptist church here, the four corners has been very helpful, um, being a place for people to drop off groceries and things as people are shopping and helping for people who are shut in for COVID-19. Um, maybe they'd be willing to, um, they do have a parking lot that somebody could park in. I haven't spoken with them, but if we're interested in paying for it, then, then we could start a conversation with them to see if they're interested. The other possibility was Smokey House. Um, those are the only two things that I came up with, but maybe somebody else has another idea.
We still own the town hall.
Right, we, we don't have electricity there right now.
And we could put it, turn it back on.
We could.
We could turn the power back on. It's not that expensive.
Yeah, we could put the, to put the power back on and there's enough room for three or four people to park right up front.
That's right.
I think if the church- Well, I think if the church is willing, that would be fine. And my second was going to be Smokey House also.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I think the.
Isn't there a fire station, an act or two? Like a.
There is, but there's not much parking next to it.
Okay.
I don't think. Am I right in remembering that, Steve?
You're right.
Okay. Um, you know, the, my thought about the church is just that it, it, it might be a, a nice, I, I know there's a new minister and, and you know, maybe they're looking for ways to make, you know, roads into the community or whatever. It might be nice to ask them if they're interested.
If they're not, we got a town hall.
Right.
Cause that would be an ideal spot.
Yeah. So my guess is that, that this would probably cost the town roughly $50 a month. I'm just guessing. Bob, does that seem about right?
If it saves a life, it'd be worth it.
Yeah, I mean, I would think like 50 to 80 bucks a month, something like that.
It'd be worth it.
So do you all want, I'd be happy to reach out to the church and ask them if they're interested and if not, we'll, we'll look at the fallback of the town hall.
I'd like you to ask Smokey House next because the issue with the town hall is the parking and it's the church parking lot.
All right.
I don't think the church would complain if somebody was gonna have problems or gonna die. The church ain't gonna, gonna die and park in there for five minutes.
Well, that's why.
In Smokey House.
And talk to them, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, now we go from $50 a month for the service plus whatever it's gonna be for the electricity.
That, that ain't, that wouldn't be very much for electricity to run that a little bit.
Well, right, but if the electricity's already turned on at the church or at Smokey House. So we'll check with the church first, Smokey House second, and, and then we'll look at the town hall as a third.
Sounds good.
All right.
If travel was down to Smokey House, where would anybody really park down there if, uh?
Right, when they're, when they're back up and running, that might be an issue.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna be a big issue.
Yeah, I, and I have sent a email to Jesse and I haven't heard back from him, so they're probably not interested, but, um, but I'll check with the church and, um, uh, and let you know. Bob, will you work with me on this?
Sure.
Sure, all right. Um, and then I had, um, I had a couple of other sort of public service announcements. One was, um, that I wanted to let people know that Greenup Day has been postponed from May 2nd to tentatively May 30th and of course, we, we don't know at this point. Um.
Right.
And also I wanted to remind people that we are not to, um, ask for or do burning, no burn permits and no burn piles until after May 30th versus by, uh, uh, by say of Ken Abbott and the state of Vermont. Um, did everybody see that come through on Front Porch?
Yeah, I see that.
I only caught part of that, Lynn.
So we're not supposed to do burn permits until after May 30th? Um, that was the state request that Ken Abbott, um, has asked us to. Um, the idea is that we don't wanna put any further pressure.
Why?
Pardon? Yeah, we don't wanna put any further pressure on our emergency response, folks, during the COVID crisis. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to remind people, everybody got a flyer in the mail about reach out if they're shut in and they need help getting, um, um, it's, um, getting food or medicines or whatever during this COVID crisis, um, that everybody had a flyer and a phone number and, uh, um, and I just wanted to remind people and I wanted to thank Ashley Loomis for heading that up for the town.
She did a good job.
Yeah. Um, does anybody have anything else?
Nope, I don't.
All right, um.
The only thing that I would have, I don't know where we're at on our trailer, but I see the one in, uh, Ennisburg has been reposted if we're interested or not, I don't know, but the kids are on school vacation, I can go look at it to somebody if we're interested. If not, that's fine too.
Well, I think we oughta just hang on to what we got and not spend anything if we don't have to. I don't know about you, Steve, but I think this is gonna be pretty tough for this town to get through another year, this year.
Well, I'm not arguing, Doug. I'm just throwing that out there that I thought was re-advertised and I don't know what's happening.
But di, didn't we agree that we were going to have the work done on the existing trailer?
I think we agreed that Paul was gonna get it weighed. We were gonna weigh it in the excavator and just make sure, and I, I don't think we've had that happen yet.
We're gonna weigh everything too. Well, with everything happening the last two weeks of Charlie going, as soon as we get time, we're gonna run it up to Tom's and put it on a scale. Like we said, weigh the trailer, then weigh the excavator with and without the bucket on it and see what we have within the weight limit. If we're close, we'll work something out. If we're not, well, we're gonna have to invest, I guess.
Right. I think we're all agreed we don't wanna spend money now unless we have to, so let's get it weighed. And it, I mean, I think part of the reason why we haven't done it is it's, it's probably not considered an essential work to weigh that right now, so we might have to wait a week or two.
Sounds, sounds good to me.
All right, anything else or would I hear a motion to adjourn?
Just a quick question, just a quick question. What is, um, going on with our road crew? Are we keeping them or what?
Are we keeping them? Yes.
Are we keeping them working or what?
We're gonna do fire, we're gonna do fire 'em?
No, that's not what I asked. I asked if we're keeping them working.
The road crew under the definition of, with COVID, the road crew is, they are considered essential workers. Um, it is considered essential maintaining roads so that there is access, um, especially during times of crisis. So at this point is for the foreseeable future, yes, we are keeping them working, um, during mud season.
Good.
All right. Would anybody like to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
All right, we just need to, Chris needs to hear a motion.
I'll make a motion.
So Doug's made a motion, anybody second?
Brad.
Brad? Um, I think we can probably just do this one as all in favor. All right, Brad, yes?
Yes.
Steve, yes?
Yes.
Paul?
Paul, yes, yeah, I'm around somewhere here.
Yes.
All right, and Lynn says yes too. All right, well, not bad for our first time through. Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.